Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council meeting. This is a regularly scheduled council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order at 5:00 p.m. Today's date is Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. This was scheduled for 5:00 p.m. because we have a Truth in Taxation meeting that needs to be held at 6:01 p.m. this evening. So we want to make sure we had enough time to cover our city council meeting before this. So I'll call this meeting to order. And Pam, would you please take the roll call?
President.
Freeleeb.
Present.
Paulson.
Present.
Beyondich.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Aaron Zelli.
Present.
Cuffy.
President, will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, just let the general public know on the Zoom is our two city counselors, Counselor Paulson and Counselor Beyondich. We also have on the line Pamela Bean, our city clerk, Tracy Lundeen from the Lundeen Group, or excuse me, Tyler Lundeen from the Lundeen Group. And they'll be talking later on in on the agenda with respect to the rates for the new MECC Center. We also have our Park and Rec Director on Zoom, Brian Silver. And we have also on the line via Zoom is Molly Landeki and Terry Radke regarding a request for Christmas caroling. And this will be under item four on the agenda, which we'll call for right now. Via Zoom, this is Molly Landeki and Terry Radke requesting to allow horses and a tractor trailer for Christmas caroling around the city of Virginia pursuant to the attached map on Saturday, December 12th, 2020, beginning at noon. And we will be looking to approve that for this evening. And so Molly or Terry, would you have any questions or comments before we move to the council?
Hi, thank you. The only thing that I just wanted to share with all of you guys is just the goal in this. I know that Terry has talked with you guys, or a few people from the from the city. But our goal is basically just to uplift the community just through, you know, having some horses there right now. If it's if it's all right to do it, we'd have about, I don't know, eight horses. But then also we have some people that are on the list for singing, you know, on the on the trailer. So basically, it's just to uplift the community. And it's a group of, you know, friends and volunteers. So that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. We'll move to the city council. Anybody have any questions for Molly? Counselor Johnson?
I do have a comment.
All right, we'll go to Counselor Johnson first, then we'll go to Counselor Beyondich. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. So first, what are we actually approving? Are we approving a parade? Are we approving permission to have animals on the street? I want to make sure we're approving the right thing. Britt, do you?
Yeah, so the biggest thing is we just wanted to make sure that it's okay. We're not expecting a parade or anything. We just wanted permission to have a tractor pulling a trailer and then a handful of horses.
Okay, and then are you going to be posting this on social media? Or how are you going to advertise? And how can the city assist with sharing those posts or other awareness?
Once we get the official approval, I can create and share a Facebook event. And that'll it'll have the the route that we will be going on. And then also just the details of what time we're meeting. And then the locations that we'll be stopping at to sing. So that will be going out on social media once or if it's approved.
Okay, because I just want to make sure that we as a city, we have our own Facebook page and have several followers, as well as our Parks and Rec Department. So we just need to make sure that we are able to share that too, so we can get as many folks in the know about this as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Beyondich?
Thank you. I think it's a wonderful idea. With everybody kind of being stuck at home, to see something like this in the community, I think, would be great. And if you could even include the park where there is less traffic, I think that would be a great idea. But thanks for coming forward with this.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Beyondich. Counselor Freeleeb?
Just real quick, Molly, will there be a cleanup detail following the horses throughout the map?
Yes, I will have a just a four wheeler pulling a little trailer and a very lucky volunteer doing that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Paulson, any questions or comments?
No, thank you. I'm just really encouraged. And thank you so much for coming forward. I look forward to to coming out and hearing you guys say, "Thank you."
Hey, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Bearbow?
Yeah, hi, just a quick question for you. I see you're starting at noon. Do you expect to go into the evening hours or are you going to quit at dusk?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I see that you're starting the caroling at noon. Are you going into the evening hours at all with this? Are you planning, because there was no end time on it?
Oh, okay. Our plan is just for safety. We would like to try to be done before it's dark. But we're so we're planning to just be out during the daylight. But I mean, and that's just for safety with like the horses and people on the wagon and stuff. So hopefully, we'll be done around 4:30, 5-ish.
Okay, that was my question, because of safety, if you didn't have lights on the trailer if you go into the evening. So you've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Bearbow. Yeah, it's exciting. Thank you for coming forward. I think we all wholeheartedly support this moving forward. This is just a bright spot in our, you know, and during this time of a pandemic, and we have a little Christmas and holiday cheer. And so thanks very much for coming forward. So I'm looking for council approval here. Or action, council action.
I'll make that motion to approve the request to allow horses, tractor trailer for the Christmas caroling around Virginia on Saturday, December 12th, beginning at noon.
Moved by Counselor Freeleeb, is there support? Support by Counselor Johnson? And support by Counselor Beyondich? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor enthusiastically? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We look forward to it.
All righty, thank you, guys.
Okay, take care.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move to item five on the agenda, which is our consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a counselor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the items be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and correction of the minutes of the regular meeting that was held on November 24th, 2020, and a special meeting that was held on November 25th, 2020. Item 5.2 is the adoption of Finance Resolution Number 20-023, the schedule of bills. 5.3, approve the 2021 liquor license renewals for all the establishments that have met the requirements for liquor renewals. Item 5.3A is nine on sale liquor licenses. They've been vetted and approved. Item 5.3B, three off sale liquors have been identified and approved. 5.3C, three off sale, three two beer licenses have been investigated and approved. And 5.3D, 10 Sunday licenses. And 5.3E, three club licenses. And these are the licenses that were approved. There are three others that are still pending moving forward. And our city clerk will be following up with those three establishments. But these are the items of liquor licenses to be approved. And just as a side note from our city clerk and from our finance director, that the motion that we passed about making a modification for the rebates on the liquor licenses from 2020 early on that have been closed, those will be opted for those who have applied at the next bill run. So item 5.4, approve item 2020 tobacco licenses. Item 5.4A, Edwards Oil Incorporated doing business as Lucky Seven Northside. Item 5.4B, Edwards Oil Incorporated doing business as Lucky Seven Hoover Road. Item 5.4C, The Miners Incorporated doing business as Super One Foods North. Item 5.4D, Miners Incorporated doing business as Super One Foods. Item 5.4E, Renda Incorporated doing business as Rocket Liquor. Item 5.4F, Apple Green Midwest LLC doing business as Express Lane Number 2339. Item 5.4G, C and B Warehouse Distributing Incorporated doing business as Virginia Short Stop. Item 5.4H, C and B Warehouse Distributing Incorporated doing business as Virginia Short Stop Express. Item 5.4I, Brenda Peliquin doing business as Brenda's Mini Mart. 5.4J, Super One Liquor LLC doing business as Super One Liquor. And 5.4K, Dennis Yorzak doing business as The New Zed. Item 5.5 is approve the massage licenses. Item 5.5A, Angela Drake doing business as Laurentian Divide Salon and Spa. Item 5.5B, Susan Santi doing business as Ah Massage. Item 5.5C, Haley Jammer as an individual massage license. Item 5.6, approve the travel request for Jen Brozak from the Police Department to attend the Public Safety Training Council, January 25th to the 29th, 2021, in Grand Rapids at a cost of $1,410. Item 5.7, approve pay estimate number six to Kraus Anderson for the Ewens Field Project in the amount of $494,889.59. Item 5.8, approve pay estimate number six to Kraus Anderson for the MECC in the amount of $1,760,613.39. And item 5.9, approve pay estimate number two to George Bugalis and Sons for the Bailey's Lake in the amount of $37,948.3. And those are the items that are on the consent agenda today. And looking for council action, Counselor Johnson?
I'd like to pull 5.3, please.
The entire amount of all?
Correct, 5.3.
Okay. All right. Counselor Johnson moves to approve 5.3. Pam has all the information ready for you in anticipation this would be the case. So we're looking for approval of items 5.1, 2, 5.4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
May I also move? Also move those items?
Moved by Counselor Bearbow and supported, was that Counselor Paulson? That Counselor Paulson, that's okay, moved and supported. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries. Move back to item 5.3, the 2021 liquor licenses renewals for the establishments A through E. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned that they're not listed in the agenda as the tobacco licenses are. Is there a reason for that?
Well, no, we anticipated that that would be a question that a counselor would ask. It wasn't on the agenda last year. But Pam has those liquor licenses in front of her. Pam, would you please articulate those liquor licenses, i.e. through E, in those order that you have them before you for Counselor Johnson's request?
Some have Sunday and some have on sale as well.
Okay.
American Legion, Casadori's Restaurant, Tommy's Rainy Lake, Virginia Elks, Riders on Main, Hoppers, Virginia Halling Center, Flammers, Express Lane, Rama's Saloon and Deli, Mel's Sports Page, Rocket Liquor, Super One Foods, North and South, Super One Liquor, Okie's Arrowhead Bar, Northern Club.
Hey, thank you.
And La Cucina.
And La Cucina. Okay, thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Want to make sure they're entered into the minutes. I guess I don't remember not seeing the list last year, but that's irrelevant. So I will be looking in the minutes to make sure they're listed there. And so I will move to approve 5.3 with the understanding they will be listed in the in the minutes of the next meeting.
Okay, Counselor Johnson moves to approve item 5.3 with the minutes to be changed to reflect the names of all the establishments in item 5.3A through E. Is there support? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we move to item six, appearances. Do we have anybody on the line that is scheduled for an appearance today? We do not. Thank you. Item seven, unfinished business. We have concluded our unfinished business last time, so we have none for this council meeting. Item eight, discussion items. Item 8.1 is adopt a resolution applying for and accepting funds from the ITRRB Residential Redevelopment Grant Program. Britt, could you give us a little bit more information for the public with respect to this discussion item?
This is a blighted house we've been working on for a while. At the last council meeting, we approved the asbestos abatement on it. And so now we're ready to apply for the grant to take the property.
And that would be the Midway Motel?
Nope, this is 406 Seventh Avenue.
Oh, 406 Seventh Avenue, okay, very good. Thank you. Okay. Looking for council action?
I will move the application to the ITRRB Residential Grant Program for 406 Seventh Avenue South.
All support.
Moved by Counselor Johnson and supported by Counselor Bearbow. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, committee reports. Item 9.1, the committee of the whole meeting that was held on December 1st, 2020, would turn this portion of the agenda over to our city administrator, Britt C. Benis. Britt?
Yep. On December 1st, at our committee of the whole meeting, the first item we discussed was a very spirited discussion about the Green Steps program. It was moved and supported to direct city staff to develop a resolution for council consideration to join the Green Steps program and to include the Community Development Planner in the development of the resolution.
I will move that.
I don't need action counsel for this one.
Don't need that.
Not at this time, no, thank you.
Thank you.
That just becomes a directive, and we'll keep working on that. Thank you. Brian Silver, our Park and Recreation Director, presented the pricing structure for events, equipment, ice rental at the Miners Event and Convention Center, or the MECC. The pricing proposal was from the Lundeen Group. Brian or Lundeen Group, do you guys have any comments? Or do you want to speak on this matter?
Mr. Lundeen?
All right, it's coming on.
Oh, sorry, I'm here. No, we just wanted to be on here just in case if there was any further questions that we need to be answered, that's all.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll continue then.
Okay.
Tyler Lundeen discussed the proposed rates for the MECC and noted that various venues in the area were compared in the development of the pricing structure. The contracts between the city, Vaha, and the school will continue to be the same for the pricing on ice time usage. It was moved and supported to authorize the proposed plan for the pricing at the MECC with the option to modify it in the future as necessary.
Looking for council action. This was moved for approval at the committee hall meeting of the structure. And does if anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Brian Silver, Park and Rec Director, or Tyler Lundeen from the Lundeen Group? Looking for council action for the authorization to approve this proposed pricing plan for the MECC?
May I also move?
How much proof?
Go ahead, Dick.
Okay, Counselor Paulson moves to approve, and it's seconded by Counselor Bearbow. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We had a request from the City of Mountain Iron for utilization of excess joint service equipment grant funds. This was a grant awarded to both the cities of Virginia and Mountain Iron for the fire departments to complete much needed equipment for both facilities to use. And in order for us to use the excess funds that were left over from the original purchase, Mountain Iron needs approval from the city of Virginia. It was moved and supported to authorize the use of the excess funds from the Mountain Iron Virginia Joint Service Equipment Grant for the purchase of extrication equipment that will be housed in Mountain Iron with the grant funds.
Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
I will move the use of those excess grant funds for the purchase of the equipment.
Moved by Counselor Johnson to authorize the use of the excess funds from the Mountain Iron Virginia Joint Services Equipment Grant for the purchase of extrication equipment that will be housed at the City of Mountain Iron Fire Department, supported by Counselor Barnzelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
David Cordar from Permar Security presented information regarding the proposal for the Permar Access Control System at the fire department. After further discussion, it was moved and supported to authorize city staff to enter into a contract with Permar at the fire hall for the installation of the necessary locks as per the contract.
Looking for council action? This was moved for support for council at committee hall meeting. Counselor Johnson?
Move for discussion.
Counselor Johnson moves to adopt the resolution to enter into a contract with the Permar for installation of the access control system at the fire hall. For further discussion, is there support? Support by Counselor Barnzelli. Further discussion? Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the questions that was asked during the during our meeting last week was if there was, if 418 was it? Because we have a contract for some other stuff, is there, is there any potential for, I believe Counselor Paulson has put it, as sharpening the pencils, did we have the ability to do that? Or are we pretty much locked into this 418 for now, for that monthly?
The 418 is an option. The monthly maintenance is an option we can do. We don't have to go with it. However, it would put us in the same predicament as we had previously, their old lock system, where we would be responsible for all maintenance and repairs.
I just hope that as we move forward, we have several, and I understand the whole why they're separate, but there's got to be some group pricing, like you can do with your, you bundle your insurance. Maybe we can bundle our buildings or something as we, when we, when we look at getting our other buildings up to date. I would hope that we can get a good, good client discount or something, because it's going to be a very expensive monthly bill for them, especially when the miners comes online. So I just hope that we can keep that in our radar. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Further discussion, I do have a couple, one quick comment about this is that, you know, when the new MECC comes into play, Permar isn't necessarily the contractor for this locks and door system there. And they, Permar is not the selected vendor for the new public safety building either. So even though this system that we're putting in the fire hall and all at $418 a month, or whatever that is, and, you know, even though it's movable and transferable to another, another building, they may not necessarily be our vendor there. So we have Permar here at City Hall. And so if we have to move that equipment over, I think we're making some adjustments to some other doors in the future. And when the fire department moves over, hopefully, when they move over to a new facility, that we'll be able to utilize that same lock system back over here. And that would negate the need for that additional monthly fee, correct?
Correct, if we, yes.
Yes, if we had transferred it over. So thank you. Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Freeleeb?
I have some.
One moment, Counselor Paulson, Counselor Freeleeb?
So Permar is not the company that we're going with, with the MECC?
Has to be competitively bid.
It has to be competitively bid. But I do recall, and one of the concerns I had was that, I thought Brian said that to provide IT support for this type of system could be an initial investment of six figures, he said, and with monthly fees following that. So we're going to be looking at the same thing for each individual building? Or because the MECC is much larger with more doors? Or I'm just saying, this could become much more costly than we anticipate with IT being a major part of that for making sure that it's maintained through all. So anyhow, it's just so ideally, like Counselor Johnson says, to try and pool that and, you know, resource accordingly, that would be preferable to go with all one vendor, if possible. But I know there's a process in place, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm still not satisfied. I'm hearing a real bad echo. Can you hear me okay?
Clearly.
Okay, I'm not satisfied with the way I think that this went down. When we look at the the resolution, it says monthly monitoring fee. And again, nothing was really broken out when it's being said that that's maintenance and monitoring. I would assume that these things come with a warranty, that the lock, the brand new locks come with, with a warranty, first of all, first and foremost. I mean, I just, I feel like we haven't done enough due diligence. I understand the fire hall needs the locks. But I just, there, there's nothing broken down. It just says monthly monitoring fee. And that's extremely high. But if it's a maintenance fee, it was never broken down for us to begin with. I don't know if that information was ever received by the city from Permar.
It was my understanding that it was for maintenance and monitoring. But Britt, could you please clarify for Counselor Johnson, or Counselor Paulson?
Yes, that is correct.
That is correct. It also includes, even though it's not broken down, I think the contract does show, and we should have a copy of that maybe, that says that it's for monitoring and maintenance repairs and replacement.
Yes, it said that, it said that in our committee packet, but it didn't break the two down. And I feel like $418 per month to monitor five locks is a lot for, especially for tax. This is taxpayers' dollars. And I feel like they should have broken that out in a more congruent sequence so that we could have understood. And I still don't understand if there's a, why would there be a maintenance if there's probably a warranty on the locks? What would need to be maintained?
Britt?
I don't know the exact, the exact period of maintenance, but it would not be for five years. The warranty would, is not usually a five year warranty.
So I guess.
I'm sure it isn't, but we were never given that information. And I'm sure the locks themselves, the physical, the physical entity of the locks has a warranty. And I'm sure the locks themselves, the physical, the physical entity of the locks has a warranty. And I'm not sure why we would be entering into a maintenance contract when probably most of that would be considered warranty issue, whatever the length of time the warranty is. But that information was never put forward, and that's why I didn't support it to begin with.
So let me ask this question, in order maybe to clarify for Counselor Paulson. We have a contract with Permar for City Hall. And included in that contract is a monitoring fee. We approve that. We also approve that it's a maintenance fee as well. So this is the same scenario we approved for the city council, or I mean, for the City Hall contract. So this is a, it's a mirror image of the contract associated with the Fire Department. So if we vetted it out--
And Mayor, Mayor, if I may--
Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, I don't want to interrupt--
No, go ahead.
But I don't know that it does mirror that because we were never given the information. So, you know, how many locks were installed at City Hall versus what the maintenance monitoring charge is? We're only installing five new locks at $418 a month to monitor and maintain them. So if you could show me that it's a mirror image and, you know, it's a, it's a match, a one-to-one match, I would be okay with that. But I, I don't have any documentation in front of me showing me that.
Yeah, I guess maybe the mirror wasn't the correct terminology to use, but the contracts are, are, the language is similar. So the breakdown, how much do we pay for our maintenance and fees for the City Hall? Do we know that, Sheri, what our monthly fee is for that?
Not offhand, sir.
I'm sorry. Not offhand? So, so Counselor Paulson is looking for the comparative there. So how much we would be paying for how many locks we're installing in City Hall? Do we know that? We have that number right now? Probably don't. So, you know, that's what you'd like to know, right, Counselor Paulson? How many locks have we put in City Hall?
Well, I had asked that, I had, I had asked similar questions at the council, I mean, at the committee level. And that's why I, I didn't vote to approve it, because I couldn't see the justice, there wasn't, it wasn't justified to me.
Okay. Okay, hold that thought if, if you have, for a moment, Counselor Paulson. Counselor Bearbu?
Counselor Paulson, if you remember right, at our meeting that we approved going forward with this, the system in the Fire Hall has to be standalone. It is not set up to be integrated with the City Hall unless we do all kinds of wiring and hard wiring and everything from, from there. You can't do it by Wi-Fi because those questions are asked. So they have to have a standalone, and the maintenance includes the equipment in the standalone part of that contract we're approving, not just the locks themselves, but the other monitoring equipment where they can change who has access to what and et cetera in that Fire Hall. So until we can come up with a system that allows us to integrate it with what's going on in City Hall, it's standalone in the Fire Hall, that's why the maintenance fee is more expensive. The warranty will be the warranty, but if they have to come out and work on the other system, that'll eat up the maintenance fee very fast.
And the reason that I'm, I'm bringing this up, I just had a Permar system, a brand-new Permar system installed. And I, as a business owner, was given the breakdown between monitoring means anytime that you have a call or, or the alarm would go off. That's monitoring. Maintenance is something different. And the expense of the equipment is something different. And, and I'm assuming we're purchasing that outright for the $12,000 or whatever that was, is that correct?
No, that is not correct, Counselor Paulson. It's a lease.
So the, the lease includes, the 418 includes the equipment? For five years?
The initial, the initial installation cost is $12,250. And then the maintenance and monitoring--
And that includes the locks themselves?
Yep, and the iStar panel that we have to put into the facility, all the wiring, all the cabling, and--
Right.
The locks, the key cards and everything that goes with it.
But the, the lease isn't on the locks?
Yes. They own all the equipment.
Okay, they own the equipment. So where, where were we ever given that breakdown? And I think, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I just, this is a point of frustration when I, as a business owner, was given specific breakdowns of all of the equipment that we installed, as well as our monitoring or maintenance, which would be servicing. So why wasn't the city provided that from Permar?
The list of, the quote did have the list of equipment that was being installed?
I, I, did you get that, Counselor Paulson, when?
It actually did, yeah, but it, it didn't have that if you go back to the packet from the committee level. I didn't see that in the packet.
But the, the original contract that we looked at to approve, that was broken down in the quote?
Didn't have pricing per item, but it had the list of items that were being installed?
Had the list of items being installed, but not, I'm saying, go ahead, Counselor Paulson.
That's correct.
Yep.
That's what I think she's saying is--
Yeah, but that's correct. But anytime, and that's, I guess my point, anytime that another contractor comes forward, whether it's Kraus Anderson or, or whomever, we, we usually get an itemization. So that's why I voted against this, because I didn't have the proper information to understand if the dollars that we're spending, taxpayer dollars that we're spending make sense or not to me. So I, I mean, I, I hope you can understand where I'm coming from.
Oh, I understand. Yeah, I think we all understand that. Yeah. So we have a motion on the floor in a second to move forward to approve this. So anything further, Counselor Paulson?
No, I just, I can't support this because I don't have the documentation in order to make it justifiable to me.
Very good. Thank you. Counselor Johnson?
I pulled up the agenda from, or the, yeah, the agenda from last, and there is no contract in our agenda from last week. It is just the access system control proposal. So I, I guess I'm leaning towards what Counselor Paulson is saying for this, this evening, because in our packets tonight, there is, there, there's nothing in here either for, to, to actually physically approve. There's no resolution, or is this the, okay, one D. You know, the second whereas says the proposal includes up to 16 wireless locks, that's the one we're doing? With, whereas the proposal includes up to 16 wireless locks and an iStar Ultra 8 readers with control and Permar Security Services new locking door that will meet the needs of the Fire Hall. I'm concerned that this is not inaccurate because we were told five. So this is not an accurate resolution, so I will not be supporting this evening approving a resolution that is not, that is not what we need. Thank you.
Did you make the original motion, Counselor Johnson? Did you make the original motion, Counselor Johnson? My, my reason for asking is maybe I, might I suggest that we make a motion to table?
Well, we're in discussion stages, we're still in discussion stages, so let's hold off for a minute. Who is, was that you, Counselor Biondich on the line?
That's Pam.
Pam, go ahead.
Okay, so in the City of the Hall packet was the proposal from Permar, which reflects the panel interface module up to 16 with the iStar panel, et cetera, 60 months with the monthly fee and then the $12,250 installation amount, which is reflected in the resolution that is in, included in your packet tonight.
That, that's kind of--
In the committee packet, there was a proposal from Permar that was discussed.
Right, that's the way I recall it as well. So there is a motion on the floor in a second to move forward with this. Further discussion, so I have some discussion items as well. The chief, fire chief, needs a new lock on his door. We can always put a temporary new lock on there if necessary in order to, you know, for the safety and security of that doorway system. A separate lock system, temporary, until we move forward with something else. And, you know, I understand the need or the want for a, for the Permar system over at the Fire Hall, but I think they're, they have enough security that they can hold it themselves without having to have this system. It's more convenience than it is a necessity from my perspective. And the fact that, you know, he has a broken lock, we put a new lock system in it, that's just fine. I'm not supportive of the $418 a month monthly fee either, and I just don't understand the need for putting those Permar locks over there and making that investment and then that cost associated with that on a temporary basis. So I think until we find a better way, which to provide more security for the, for the Fire Hall, they already have a lock system, a buzz-in system there already in the front door. If the chief needs a lock, we can put one on there temporarily, and we work, we can work on something else. But I just think this proposal is too expensive, and I don't think it's necessary. And I think other security steps can be taken to ensure this, you know, the integrity of, of the doorway systems that the Fire Department needs. So that's the way I look at it. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think where the confusion is coming is the first item on the quote from last week says an inner, two interface panel modules for up to 16 locks. So it's not, the, the first line of the resolution is inaccurate. It is not a proposal for up to 16 wireless door locks, they, they don't match. So at the end of the discussion, I will, I will, I plan on making the motion to table it until we can clean up the language and have the discussion about what we do need to pass.
Well, there's a motion and support to move forward with the approval of this lock system, Permar for the Fire Department. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those--
I will, Mayor, I would move to table this.
Okay, Counselor Johnson moves to table. Is there support?
I'll support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next item.
Next item on the agenda, we had an appearance from Mr. Bill Henness, Public Works Director, regarding the quotes for the purchase of a garbage truck and chassis with a conventional left-hand drive. Henness noted that by using the left-hand system, this truck is approximately $10,000 cheaper than the right-hand systems we formally purchased. It was moved and supported to approve purchasing a 2022 Kenworth Model T4400 garbage truck chassis and a 2021 Heil Rapid Rail 20 cubic yard garbage truck body in the total amount of This is a 2021 capital expenditure, and we will not be making payments until 2021.
And so the total is $236,970.68.
Correct.
Thank you. Looking for council action. Counselor Johnson?
I will move the purchase of the Rihm Kenworth and McQueen equipment at the resolution.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Biondich to adopt the resolution for the purchase of a 2022 Kenworth Model T440 garbage truck chassis and a, and a 2021 Heil Rapid Rail 20CY garbage truck body in the total amount of $2,036,970.68 to be paid for, for fiscal year 2021. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
And that was all I had from that meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Britt. So we'll move to item 10 on the agenda, which is committee liaison department heads reports. First, we'll go around to the city council, if there's any city council member have a report they'd like to give tonight. Seeing none, we'll move to our administrative reports. Anything more on the administrative side, Britt?
Reminder that City Hall is closed this week due to the number of COVID cases we have with employees in the building. We were having a little hard time keeping our administrative function going. So just for the safety of everybody, we've closed for the week. We expect to be open on Monday, December 14.
Okay, and we should be reopening City Hall by Monday, the 14th.
Correct. And if everybody stays where they're at, if all the, we have no further quarantines and no further isolations, we should be able to open on the 14th.
Very good. With no further cases moving forward, we anticipate reopening City Hall Monday, December 14th. Thank you. Sheri, our city--
Mayor?
One, one second, please. Sheri, anything from you?
No, I'll have an opportunity here shortly.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I just kind of wanted to tack on to what Britt was saying. You know, part of the reason that I Zoom most of the meetings is because I am around the general public all day, and I know other councilors are as well. So I just wanted to let people know that I just, out of respect and trying to do what I can to keep people safe and stay on Zoom.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Paulson. Anybody else have any report they'd like to give?
I, I do--
Counselor, Counselor Biondich. Counselor Biondich, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. And I don't think I've said it publicly, but I do have some family members that have had COVID, and I try to stay out of City Hall as well, just out of respect for everybody that does have to go to work. So that's why I attend these meetings on Zoom. I appreciate all your patience with that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Biondich. And we have another council meeting coming up before the Christmas break, holiday break. But I'd just like to remind everybody if, just to keep your thoughts and prayers in mind for all those people who are in need, people who are suffering during this pandemic, and those who are, have a difficult time, the homeless, and those families that don't have a lot, that need more assistance now than ever before. And I know Virginia has always been good about lending a hand to each and every possible individual who is in need. So the churches are asking for your help, the food shelf is asking for your help, the, the homeless shelters are asking for your help. And so if you can just give a little, donate a little bit more to the food shelf, do something more for those people who are really in need during this holiday season. Your generosity is, is, has always been really good, and we hope that you'll continue to think about those, people are less fortunate than us moving forward, so thank you very much. Does anybody have anything else? Okay, we have a, a truth and taxation meeting we have to hold after 6:00 PM. So I will recess the council meeting at 5:50 PM, and we will resume our city council meeting at the truth and taxation portion of it at 6:01. We stand on recess, thank you. Once again, good evening, everybody. We're now out of recess and reconvening the city council meeting. The purpose of this is to weigh in on the truth and taxation. We're required by law to do that every year. We also have to do it at 6:01 PM, that's the law. So now we're here to talk about the truth and taxation meeting. And Pam Levine, our city clerk, Pam, is there anybody on the line that has any questions or comments about, who wants to address the council regarding this truth and taxation meeting?
Oh, there is not, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I'll turn this portion of the meeting, I'm sorry, Britt?
We do have on the line Scott Weepa and a caller at 218-780-1185.
Okay, so we have two people on the line of, so, Pam?
Sorry, I did not see that till I just--
We have, we have two people on the line. Okay, let's take the first one, Mr. Weepa?
Yes?
Uh, go ahead.
Well, I was just, I'm wondering the way this trending is going, at least with our hosts on their taxes and our valuations with not doing any major improvements or anything. It just seems like we're starting, our taxes are getting out of control here a little bit, and I, I don't know why, or if it's because the county's doing it, or what's happened. And last year, we looked at other brick houses through Southside, and it seems like we're way overvalued, so, I mean, that--
Sheri?
Thank you, Mayor, councilors. Mr. Weepa, this is Sheri, our-- Thank you, Mayor, counselors. Um, Mr. Weepa, this is Sheri Erickson.
Hi, Sheri.
Hi. Um, as you may be aware, that the city no longer does the appraisal for the homes in Virginia, but the St. Louis County does.
Well, I understand that Cheryl was the praiser. She was in the assessor's office.
Correct.
So I know that firsthand.
So have you contacted the St. Louis County as to ask why, uh, the value is as such?
Well, we have. We've talked to the, uh, assessor's office quite a bit there and it's just, I don't know, you don't really get a straight answer out of anybody. I, I just feel like sometimes, uh, I look at the other, where everything else is at. It's just, living in the city of Virginia is, is, uh, getting to be very expensive, uh, tax-wise. And I don't know if I'm the only one, but, you know, I hear there's been a lot of other issues too with, uh, the county taking over and doing some, uh, valuations and stuff. And, uh, uh, I don't know, I think a lot of people are frustrated over it.
Sheri?
I totally understand, um, your frustration. I live in the same county. Um, but we do have means of the board of review, which is in the spring, but it's my understanding that would be for the next market value. Um, so I, I do appreciate your input. The 2% levy that we're proposing for 2021, or 20, payable in 21, is a $96,500 increase, which is roughly one employee with benefits, one full-time employee with benefits.
Go ahead, Mr. Weepa.
Well, here's, here's a question I have is, uh, our actual city tax, city Virginia taxes were $1,535 for 2020. The proposed for 2021 is 1,853. That's over a $300 jump.
Yes, and, uh-
Our value, our value went up about $9,000, uh, for whatever reason, but it just seems like that's an awful big jump in, uh, on the city taxes.
Uh, Counselor Bearable?
Yeah, Scott, uh, this is Counselor Bearable. Um, I'm in the same-
Hi, Charlie.
Uh, hi. I'm in the same frustration mode as you because they reevaluated the city of Virginia in 19. All of a sudden we get our, uh, estimated stuff for, uh, 20, uh, 21 here this fall. And mine jumped also, mine jumped over $7,000, my home. And I don't live very far from you, I live a couple of blocks from you. And my question is, we got our final notice that we had to bring the equalization board back on March, um, 16th. And our equalization board was April 16th, it was the 20th, I'm sorry, it was the 20th of, of, uh, April, we got our final notice of what our taxes are going to be, but, and our valuations, and we had to complain on that by, uh, April 16th, when our, when our, uh, equalization board was. Now, the county being it was COVID during that time, I didn't receive mine even close to the date that it was printed. So we're going to set up an appointment to complain about that. And it's too late for me now to do this because that value is used, uh, right now, we just got this fall, uh, for coming up, uh, for final taxes in, uh, 21. So I can't even complain on it, uh, right now. And their county's got to do something to get these things done. So when they do their stuff in the fall, they can start these equalization boards. And I'm going to complain to the, uh, county level commissioners about this. They need to start these way earlier and get it done. Uh, cause you get an estimated one in the fall, somewhere early November usually. And I can't understand why it takes them until, uh, spring to get it out because they're waiting for the final tax. But if you even, uh, that equalization board doesn't have anything to do with your taxes, all it has to do with your valuation on your home. So they should be able to do that because it comes out, uh, in, in the fall, that increase in valuation. Um, but mine only went up 1,000, uh, for the first one I got, uh, from, uh, in 19 to for 20. And then all of a sudden I'm getting this huge jump. So I'm in the same boat you are. So something's got to be done with the county. And, and we've got to have some conversations and call some meetings with their county assessors and find out what in the hell they're doing. Excuse my language.
Uh, Scott, uh, go ahead, Scott.
Well, yeah, I, I don't mean to drop, it's hard because we're just trying to do it, you know, uh, with this, with the Zoom meeting, but I, I appreciate your time. Uh, the thing that's frustrating a little bit is to try to deal with this county also. I, I just, uh, uh, they just kind of, just give you the runaround and it's, it's, uh, gets a little frustrating, you know, as a taxpayer. And it just seems like our, everything is, has been jumping here the last couple of years. And I know I'm not the only one out there. And, uh, I, I hate to see Virginia get a bad reputation of all of this. You know, we're trying to get more people to move into town, not lose people. And I, I think you can probably go up on Lake Vermillion and have less taxes than you're paying in the city of Virginia now, based on value. And that's kind of scary when you start thinking about it.
Yeah, Scott, yeah, you know, I, I, I understand exactly where you're coming from. My property taxes have increased as well. I'm sure there, there's, and there have been a lot of citizens that are concerned about the valuations of their property and the, the formulas that the county uses to, uh, establish those values. And people's values have been increasing significantly in, in large chunks. Uh, I, I don't understand it either. I spoke with some of the other mayors, uh, you know, within the, on the Iron Range area there. And, uh, they're, some of them are just as frustrated as we are about, you know, the valuations of properties. And, 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 and so we set a levy based upon how we can balance our budget based upon our needs. And so as the cost of doing business goes up, you know, the only people who pay, of course, is you as a residential owner or a commercial owner, a, a tax based on the levy. And so we tried, uh, to minimize it as much as we can with this 2% levy. And I know that the 2% that we received is based on a, you know, uh, uh, of the total amount of, uh, what we have in, uh, I don't know if it's $364 million or $368 million or something of that effect. And so when we put raise, when the resident, when the levy gets raised 2%, we get 2% of what our property values is. So if they increase, the county increases your, your levy and, uh, or increases your taxes by, you know, $300 a year, we don't get that $300, you know, uh, we don't get that. We just, we, we get a percentage of that. And so the county, uh, is the one who takes that levy and then, uh, or takes that property valuation. And I'm with you, my property values have skyrocketed, uh, over the course of the last, uh, a few years. And I, you know, it's difficult for me to try to justify paying, uh, over $3,500 a year in property taxes for a house that I own. So it is frustrating for us. It's frustrating for you. Today, we're at the truth and taxation meeting and we're here to talk about the 2% levy and whether we're going to approve that to levy everybody in, in the city of Virginia 2% for a total of about, was it $98,000? Okay, $96,400. So that's how much money we're going to glean out of all those property increases that values that everybody received, uh, within the community. And so when we had our, our meetings, we did make an effort to, to, uh, to find out, you know, how can we make adjustments to people's property values? Of course Cheryl knows, uh, well, you know, as her longstanding, uh, professional work as an assessor with the city of Virginia and how frustrating it is, I'm sure for her too, about we don't have control over the, the, uh, the system and how things are valued anymore. So, uh, it does warrant additional conversation. It doesn't address or, or justify or, or, uh, why, uh, you know, or really doesn't, doesn't answer, you know, the question or, or is there any action we can take at this meeting, you know, to make an adjustment to your property values? And, and that is frustrating, Scott.
Well, no, I appreciate the fact, you know, and, and the other thing that we look at our, uh, my utility bill last month was $40 for sewer for two of us. And we weren't even home all the time. And you start looking at what's happening to Virginia here. I don't know if, if it's just because we're spending way more than we used to or what, but somehow, some way, uh, the taxpayers in this town are paying more than their fair share on everything. And I think we don't want to get a reputation of, of chasing our people out of town or to the residential areas. That's what scares me a little bit, just to keep our utilities going in town here too. And, uh, that water and sewer is getting out of hand also. And, and I know, and I know that we've had issues with the midway connections and I understand that. I hope some of that comes around, the 5 million or whatever it is. But, you know, you're hurting, a lot of people are on limited fixed incomes and, uh, they're going to have a hard time staying in Virginia.
Sheri?
Counsel, Mayor, um, it's totally up to you what you want. Um, personally don't feel if you took away the 2% levy that it would relieve, um, Counselor Bearable's tax problem or Mr. and Mrs. Weepa's tax problem. I still think because of the market value and definitely is something that, um, the county obviously has a heavy hand in how they're assessing or appraising these markets. Um, it, it does merit, uh, if Virginia's paying a lion's share of this, and like you said, the majority of this goes to the county, then I think we need to see some back to help with the ambulance services, to help with how we're being spread pretty thin on the expense side.
Well, yes. And, uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, if I may speak on behalf of Mr. Weepa and myself too and others, that it's, it's the cost of doing business keeps rising. And he, uh, Scott, you referred to the water and sewer bill as an issue. So, you know, we had to raise our sewer rates and our water rates and for a couple of reasons. One is, you know, we have to ma, meet the requirements of the PFA loan that we have with our water sewer treatment plant. And we have to make sure that, you know, our, that our, um, that, uh, what we charge these customer can, and can, uh, can pay the, the PFA loan at the, at the small, the, 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 the interest rate that we have, which is pretty low. And so that's number one. And the other part of the water and sewer rate, I think there was a decision made that we have some OPEB costs, uh, uh, post-healthcare benefit costs, uh, for some employees that, that have been here a long time. And, and they get, uh, the medical benefits that we, we have the legacy costs that we have to, uh, we have to, we have to address. And part of the, uh, the, uh, the standards and pours of the Moody's rate, uh, it makes it difficult for us. You know, we have to make an adjustment to try to, you know, our, our bond rating suffers if we don't take some action in that regard. So part of that water and sewer rate increase was a result of that, at least, uh, combination perspective. But, um, Sheri, you add your light on?
Yes, you make a good point there, Mayor. I did forget about the OPEB liability. We do have, um, not only are we paying as you go each year, and this year, you know, on the expense side of the budget, uh, we are anticipating close to a million or over a million, yeah, over a million dollars in retirees' insurance. So we're not only paying a million dollars out, out of our general fund budget to meet the OPEB liability, but we're also investing into the OPEB liability so that our bond rating is a little more credible, a little more secure. And, um, I'm pleased to say there is over $2 million sitting in that OPEB bond in their account, I'm sorry, our account, our trust account with Para. If we had to, we could tap into that, but I would like to save that for the future down the road.
Okay, so, thank you. Uh, Scott?
Well, I, I, I appreciate all, everybody giving us, giving me the time to speak. I know you, you probably have a lot more people, but I guess you understand the frustration a little, but I think we're all running into with the county here. And I don't know how we fix it or whatever, but if this trend keeps continuing, uh, this is going to be a nightmare for everybody in town here. But I appreciate your time and, and the work that everybody does. And, and thank you for letting me speak at this meeting.
Scott, before you leave.
Counselor Bearable?
Okay, Charlie.
Uh, I'm going to make it a personal, um, request, uh, to our commissioner in the sixth district, start taking a look at what's going on with this and why they can't do their hearings and stuff differently. Cause we had no real opportunity last year with the way those, uh, statements came out in the middle of that COVID at the end of, uh, March. And all of a sudden our hearings right away where people could not complain. Plus they were doing it by Zoom. I've had frustrations like crazy. It took me, uh, four months to get a lease with, with the county changed over because I couldn't get ahold of anybody in their offices. They never returned their calls. So this is part of the problem. They need to get their damn offices open.
Okay, thank you.
I think communication is important on all ends for everybody. And, and it just seems like, with, I know it's difficult times too, but, uh, the county could all, has got to cooperate a little bit better than what they've been doing, I, I believe anyway. So. And, and once again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott, very much. Pretty appreciated. Okay, um, we have someone else on the line?
We do have a caller from number 218-780-1185.
Okay.
Could you please state your name?
Janice Johnson-Jacke.
Go ahead, Ms. Jacke.
I'm just very upset with my taxes. I mean, we built this home in 98 and the taxes are going up so extreme. My projected taxes for next year are almost $4,800. I retired a year and a half ago and you guys are going to tax me out of my own house. This is ridiculous. $4,800. I'm not living on the lake.
And, uh, I, I know where you live, Ms. Jacke, and I know that the county actually identified that area in which you live, for whatever reason, I don't know, uh, as a, an under taxed area. And they, and, and you suffered the consequence of that.
Yeah, they, they jumped the value 12, 12,300 from 2020 to 2021. And sorry, but where, and you know where I am, right by the city garage and, and the most pleasant view. And my whole yard, my whole backyard is tar that the city left when they sold these lots. So I don't know, I may have to, I did contact the county once, so I may have to have them come and reappraise. Um, I, I just, uh, very frustrated. Like I said, I'm not on the lake and to have to be paying $4,800 in taxes and the city's portion is 2879. So that's one thing they recommended me to do is come and listen or come to this meeting or listen. And obviously we had to listen to it. Like I said, the city portion is showing, and I'm just showing on my main home, 2410 last year and 2879 projected for next year, proposed, excuse me.
Yeah, and, uh, that's the, that's the, that's the increase in the value of your home?
The increase of value, they increased it 12,300.
Yeah, mine was-
And if I may ask? If I may ask?
You know, the actual tax from 2410 to 2879 on the city, county's going up $40.
If, if, if I may ask, Ms. Jacke, um, what is, what does the county have your, uh, home assessed at, your, your, your total value of your home?
242.7 and 4,500 on my second lot.
Hey, thank you. One, uh, Counselor Bearable?
You know, Ms. Jacke, um, one of the issues we're going to have, I left a message today at the county assessor's office and their playback to me was the fact that they aren't going to send anybody out to reassess values on homes right now because of the COVID. And, uh, so your chances of getting any satisfaction out of the county, because the only way you're going to get satisfied, they come back and relook at your home and they have to do it internally and externally. They're not going to do it right now. I was very frustrated. Mine, my home now went up $7,100 and I, my home is valued at 135.8. So, uh, and I went up over $2,000 from my taxes on my house from, uh, from 1,700 a year ago. So, um, you know, I'm in the same-
Charlie, I thought that they said in the spring that they would, that they could send somebody out, but it wouldn't be till spring, I thought she said.
Well, yeah, but the problem is, it's, it's too late with this next go-around from my understanding of it, to do anything about it for page 21 now. Um, so it's, um, you know, you got to complain, uh, at the truth and taxation hearing a year ago. And those things came out so late, nobody got a chance to really look at them. Unless I'm misinterpreting what, uh, what I, what I read in their, uh, sheets that they come up, because they give you the time and place where the hearings are for the truth and taxation, not truth and taxation, but the equalization boards. It's right on the bottom of those yellow sheets.
Well, you know, I think, I think, Ms. Jacke, we, I mean, I should say we, uh, I would urge you, and, and I have done this, contacted the county and asked them, you know, take a look at my property value. Take another look at it, whether you come out and take a look at it or not, you've already been to your house this year. They already took photographs, they already assessed it, they already know what it looks like. They don't need to come back out, but they can certainly pull it up on their system and take a look at, you know, the value of your property and make an adjustment based upon that. So they don't have to visit your home. And I've done the same thing, make a request for them to reevaluate and take another look at my file and say, look, you know, this is really, uh- your issue is the same. Here at this truth and taxation meeting, we have to look at what our levy is and how much we need to balance our budget. And so, we look at raising the value, the levy for, on properties. And it's, you know, I think we're looking at a 2% increase now. And in that, so the increase in your home and the taxes that you're paying, the majority of that goes, you know, elsewhere. And the county is, holds the ball and the bat and the glove and the controls the cost and the value of your property. And so, we're just as frustrated as you are with respect to that. I know that the county is looking, does that on a regular basis. And like, I think you heard me speak to Mr. Weepa about, you know, how all these other mayors are just as frustrated about the valuation of the homes that the county is assessing in their communities and how they think that their taxes are significantly high too. And I don't want to put the other two particular cities on the, you know, here, but they are, they're close to us. They're right in our neighbor area. And the people are just as frustrated with their increases as well. So, I would urge you, I think we would urge you to contact the assessor, have them take a look at your file and see if they can reevaluate. Ms. Jacke?
So, another question I have is, didn't the city have the option of going with the county as assessor? Didn't you have the option to have your own assessor?
Well, we did. We had our own assessor and, and of course, first assessor retired. And then the assistant assessor, she retired as well. And so, we were left with no assessor. So, we advertised and did everything we could to hire another assessor. We advertised and we had no response. We advertised again, no response. And so, the law says that if we, if we don't have our own assessor, can hire our own assessor, the county takes over. And that's exactly what happened.
Sure, sure. I didn't realize that you had tried to fill the position and you couldn't fill it.
We did.
Okay. Can you ever try again or is it not worth doing?
Well, I think there's a way to do, I think there's a way to do that, Ms. Jacke. But if you take a look at all the communities within St. Louis County, I don't think anybody has their own assessor anymore, just including Duluth. The county assesses all those properties as well. We were one.
What about Greenwood Township? Didn't they take their own back or have their own?
That, I don't know. That's a township. I don't know if they did or not.
For some reason, I'm thinking they have their own, that they got out of the way from the county.
Yeah. And I'll tell you that we did have somebody that was interested, but their license lapsed and didn't want to, you know, get relicensed. So, it created a problem for us. Whether Greenwood Township does their own, I do not know that. But I know that the majority, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. I was just curious because just wondering if that could be beneficial to the people of the city of Virginia to have their own instead of with the county?
Well, I think we have a, you know, there's a law that we have to maintain a certain level of, by state law, you know, what we levy and assess people's properties, that we have to be within a certain, within a certain range. And I think that the county indicated that we weren't anywhere within that range when they first took over, we were. But when they didn't assess for five years, now they reassessed everybody and instead doing it gradually, like we asked them to do, do it on a gradual basis over a longer period of time to catch up. They did it all in one big lump sum. And so, that's where we're here today, because our property values are going up significantly. Not everybody's, but those that have gone up have gone up significantly like you, like yours, Ms. Jacke.
Right.
So, I would ask you, and you know, I guess we're passing the buck, for the lack of a better term, to the county and have them take a look at your file and reevaluate your property value and where you live.
Okay.
And your surrounding areas. So, if you could do that, that may help you.
Yep, I will. I'll definitely call back.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the line? No one. Okay. Any, any councilors have any questions or comments as we take a look at the truth of taxation we're having the hearing tonight? I think the, our city clerk, I mean, our city finance director, HR director, and our city administrator are looking for us to take a look at approving the levy tonight at this hearing. And there are nobody else, no one else on the line. Pam had indicated, our city clerk, that there are no written letters of concern to address this particular truth and taxation meeting. So, I'm looking for questions, comments, concerns. Council Biondich?
Thank you. Have we from the city talked to anybody at the county about the property values in town? And I know you had mentioned about the fire service, that contributes a little bit to, to the taxes and the burden that Virginia is under. Have we pursued that as a city to meet with them and try to work some of this out?
We have in the past to do so, Council Biondich. And I agree, and we need, we need to do that again. Have a sit down conversation with Pat Orent, the one who I think is the, he kind of manages the assessor's office and his staff, and try to figure out if there's some way that we can look at our property values and how they're determined based upon that formula that they use.
I would be willing to help in any way that I could. I know that in the city of Virginia, such, we have an aging community and our older, older folks are going to have a tough time with all the increases that keep coming. So, if there's any way we could put something together, I would be willing to help on that and get some more answers for the citizens and for our taxpayers.
Thank you, Council Biondich. I think it would be foolish to reach out to the county once again and see if we can set up a meeting some way or shape or form. And I think we could have our staff take a look and reach out to the county and see what can be done and what action we can take probably sooner than later.
Thank you. I just feel, after hearing just from the two people, when they call as individuals, it might be a little tougher for them to, to get the answers that we need. But I think as a city entity and the council, we could maybe push that forward a little bit quicker for us.
And we'll look into that. Thank you, Brett, for nodding your head, yes. Anything else, Council Biondich?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Bearable.
Yeah, what we need to really discuss with the county is the way that they do their equalization boards and stuff, they wait till the very last minute to get the information, the final information before people can go to do that, once their values are raised in the fall. That's what's happened last year. And that's where everybody's values actually went up, was last year for 2021, not, not 2020. Because they're always a year behind in what they do, but they're a year ahead in how they value. So, we need to get them to start looking at a whole change in this system that they have. And we're going to have to start putting some pressure on them. You know, and I looked at mine today, the new estimate, and it's not from the county itself. Mine went up 50 bucks from the county and went down from the school district, but it all went up from the city portion of it. It's because of the way they're valuing the value of the city. They did a lot of reductions on big pieces of property that shouldn't have been reduced. Because they told us their whole valuation of the city went down. When they did all this stuff. And that's not the right way to do it. It should be equalling out. And equal, and equalled it out on the backs of the residents, not on any of the commercial properties. They went down, most of them.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Looking for some council action about the, the truth and taxation, the request of our staff. And what we discussed and moved to this meeting is to approve the 2% levy. And once again, I want to go back to Sherri. And so, you were looking for a motion on the floor, one way or the other, with respect to the levy increase for 2021. And could you please give us the perspective and how much?
We have to close the public hearing first before we make any motion.
We have to close the public hearing. Well, can you give, give us the numbers before we make the motion?
The general fund levy would be $4,921,116. The special levy for VITA would be $70,686. The special levy for the P&amp;H tax abatement, this is where they pay their property taxes. And because this is 100% tax abatement, they get this portion back out of their taxes. It's $142,679. The miners' debt levy of 2020 B bond, $163,675. And then our debt service of $878,392 for a total proposed tax levy of $6,176,548.
And that equates to a 2% increase in our levy?
The 2% would be on the general fund, an increase of $96,492.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. Does anybody have any else to want to add before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Also move, Mayor.
Moved by Council Bearable, supported by Council Barnzeli. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're, the public hearing is now closed. We resume the city council meeting and looking for council action based upon our truth and taxation meeting.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion on the truth and taxation and our levy for the city of Virginia. I'll move that we go with a 2% increase. And I'll explain the reason why when we have discussion on it.
A move by Council Bearable, is there support? Is there support, support by Council Johnson? So, it's been moved by Council Bearable, supported by Council Johnson, to move forward with approval of a 2% levy of the general fund, which is a total of $96,492. Is there any further discussion? Council Bearable?
My concern is if we don't do this at this point in time, we are supposedly going to get $5.4 million next July. But you never know what the state of Minnesota legislature is going to do with that money with all the indebtedness that they've got going. Have you seen the latest projections on indebtedness? It's like 1. something billion dollars coming up for the next year. They had projected 4. some billion dollars. Now, they reduced that down. I just saw the latest projection two days ago. And that doesn't include what they're talking about doing, sending money and flipping money to everything that's happened in Minneapolis with all the destruction down there. They're talking about putting money there. So, we have to be cautious. There's a possibility we may not get that money back on the timeframe that has been approved by the legislature. They can always backtrack on this stuff. And that worries me right now. So, I think we need to go with this just to make sure we can keep our city going at the level it's going at. And the city is frugal in how we spend our money, actually, in this city. If you look at the improvements, we've got some additional businesses now that have come in that should help tax revenue next year. We've had a Hobby Lobby that'll be fully taxed next year. We've got the new Harbor Freight company that came in, they won't, they won't be fully taxed, but there'll be a portion of it. We've got Tractor Supply Store that is fully taxable. And we've got possibilities that I've heard rumors of a couple other businesses privately coming in that we don't know about at this point in time. But we need to continue our good services for this city. So, that's my reasoning for the motion to approve the 2% levy.
Which is pared down significantly from where we first started with our discussion and our budget. I think we started a little bit higher than, we went to five and now we're down to two. And it's because of staff and the hard work by the city council, trying to minimize as much as we can the adverse effect we have on our communities. So, there was moved and supported to approve the 2% levy for the general fund, which totals $96,492. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify, I'm sorry, Council Johnson?
Which of the resolutions are we voting on first? Adopting the budget for 2021 or setting the final tax levy? Okay. So, we're setting the final tax levy.
That is correct. That's the motion on the floor.
Appreciate the clarification.
Yep, thank you. So, that's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're looking for an approval for the budget.
I will move adopting the budget for year 2021.
Council Johnson moves to approve and adopt the budget for 2021. Is there support?
I will support, Mayor.
I'll support.
Support by Council Paulson? Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Anything else that anybody wants to bring up before we adjourn the council meeting for this evening? Council Bearable?
Yeah, Mayor, it's nothing for business or anything. I just want to compliment our staff and the city council on the good job that they did in presenting the budget this year. They started a lot earlier than we've started in years past. And I think we all appreciate that. And I think they did an excellent job for we as councilors to put everything straightforward and we didn't have to ask a lot of questions. It was all there in black and white for us. Thank you, staff and Mayor and council. I just wanted to add personally.
Yeah, thank you, Council Bearable. Okay, any other further discussions? Any other reports? Council Barnzeli?
I'd like to echo Council Bearable's, what he's saying about you people working hard. Thank you.
Thank you. That's just unfortunate. We have to raise the levy and put the burden on the citizens of Virginia. But, you know, we have to run our city services. So, try to do whatever you can to minimize the impact as much as possible. So, it's been moved and supported to adopt the budget for 2021. Is there any further discussion? We vote on that already?
Yeah.
Boy, 68 years old, I use that quite a bit now, don't I? Okay, so, nothing else to become before the city council this evening. We will stand adjourned to the next city council meeting, which will be Tuesday, September, I'm sorry, Tuesday, December 22, 2020 at 5:30 PM here at City Hall. Everybody have a great week, stay safe. See you next time. Stand adjourned.